And we will call to order our, what is it, May 19th meeting of our carry planning and zoning board, and we will begin by adopting what I believe is going to be a revised agenda. Mr. Miller?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as published with the following two amendments: removal of case D2, which is 13 REZ02, old carpenter property at Morrisville Parkway PDP, and removal of item E1, which is 14 REZ03, McGregor Center PDD amendment. The applicants have respectively requested removal of those.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries unanimously. And next, we're going to approve some minutes. First of all, the April 15th work session minutes. Do we have any additions or corrections? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the work session minutes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries unanimously. And then finally, we have the April 28th regular meeting minutes. Do we have any additions, corrections? Motion, please.
I move that we approve the April 28th regular meeting minutes.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries unanimously. And now, we're going to move into our public hearings. And before we start that, I'm going to give you a little bit of background on how we do this. First of all, we will get a presentation of the base case by a member of our staff who is going to speak at this podium to my left, your right. And following that, I will open the public hearing, and the first person we will hear from if they elect to speak to us is the applicant, who will have 10 minutes to speak. After the applicant's presentation, I will open the public hearing to anyone else that wants to speak to us. And the rule is that each speaker gets five minutes to speak. You'll notice a little black box on the podium. That black box will have a green light on it for the first four and a half minutes of a speaker's comments. At four and a half minutes, the green light will go out and orange light will light. And that will stay on for 30 seconds, and at five minutes, a red light will light. And I'm going to ask you at that point in time to please conclude your comments to be fair to other speakers. I ask you to be concise, avoid repetition if you have multiple people that want to speak on exactly the same issues. Perhaps you can elect someone as a representative. Please understand that the board is not going to interact with you. This is our chance to listen to you. And so, we appreciate it if you would address your comments to all members of the board and no specific board member. That said, I think we're going to start with our first case, which is, I believe, is something we have just a little bit of a background in, and it's LVO Ron 27, which is our champion trees ordinance. Ricky? It seems like we've been talking about this one since dawn of this board.
That's true. Good evening, board members. These land development amendments significantly change the way trees are preserved in the town. Simply, these regulations provide an opportunity to preserve more champion trees while still allowing reasonable development of properties. As you're aware of, last December, the council approved interim changes to our tree ordinance relating to champion trees. Also, last year, this board and the council directed staff to do more comprehensive revision to our tree protection regulations to save more champion trees while still balancing development. The planning zoning board has held several work sessions, and we've gathered the feedback from you all and incorporated those changes into the proposal you have before you. We've also requested information and feedback from stakeholders made up of citizens and development community, and we have taken some of those comments in and made some changes to address those. I will present an overview of the major changes. As you can see here, there's eight different areas I'm going to talk about, ranging from tree protection to modifications and reductions to allow for protection of champion trees. As discussed, these amendments will try to balance protecting trees while also allowing reasonable development of properties. There's also, within this intent and purpose section, we want to clearly outline why the town saves champion trees. And many of you know this site along Kildare Farm, Shannon Oaks Development, and the shops at Kildare. And I wanted to highlight this just because, to show that there's several features of these existing trees that provide value to the community. One is because of their existence, they provide a significant absorption of rainfall as well as, you know, filtering pollutions from the area. They also add to the tempering, the heating effect of these urban communities with asphalt and buildings. Not only that, if you've experienced this development, you can truly say that it provides a significant aesthetic benefit to our community, and also tremendously, it kind of sets an actual vision of the town of how important saving trees are. But again, what we want to do is try to provide a balance of developing properties while providing some areas for saving those existing trees, champion trees. One of the first steps of a tree protection ordinance is a tree survey. And this, tree surveys are required when anyone wants to submit a plan for developing properties. And this tree survey is specifically only for those areas within that you're disturbing as well as areas adjacent to the disturbed areas. And what we want to do is make sure, if you're on the edge of a champion tree, critical root zones, that we make sure we're able to identify those champion trees adjacent to disturbed areas, or those specimen trees, which are 18-inch calibers and greater trees as well. So, this has not changed too much from what we require today, except we're actually lessening the area that has to be surveyed, in the sense that, right now, you have to survey the whole site for champion trees and specimen trees. This change would allow for, if you're not within 100 feet or 50 feet of a specimen tree, you don't have to actually survey that area that you're not disturbing. So, that potentially could save some money for the developer, or if it's a separate phase in their project that they're not getting approval on. The other thing we're adding with the tree survey is the arborist review and involvement. And why we're doing this is because we're adding a requirement to inventory, understorey champion trees. And these are maybe difficult for just a surveyor to identify, so this will kind of help with that. Also, it's wise for an applicant to hire an arborist too, because in order to qualify as a champion tree, it has to be in good health, and also has to meet certain standards. So, and those are best evaluated by a certified arborist. And so, that's why these requirements are in here. With regard to tree protection, one of the important things for saving trees on site is the location of tree protection fencing. And we wanted to make it clear that, you know, some of these champion trees are adjacent to existing impervious surfaces. And so, we want to make sure that that's not, you don't have to actually take those into account when identifying the critical root zones, because as long as you're keeping those intact, you don't have to say, hey, I'm disturbing a lot more than 25% if it was already grown in place there. So, the second addition to this section is to require trenching when you're adjacent to a critical root zone of a champion tree or specimen tree. And that today's ordinance just said it should be done, and we're requiring it now, when, only when you're immediately adjacent, the disturbed areas immediately adjacent to that critical root zone of only champion and specimen trees. One of the things we did as staff is added a specific section dealing with champion tree protection. Not to say that we didn't have champion tree protection ordinance, we just didn't have a section that clearly outlined that the community wants to save champion trees. We also added a section of champion tree called champion tree priority list. And the reason we did that is because not all champion trees are alike from our perspective. And in addition, not all champion trees potentially are going to be required to be saved on sites. And so, and I'll get to that in a minute. So, what we've done is list, for the community's sake, here are the most important champion trees, and here are the least important champion trees. They're all important, but going on a priority list. So, that way, when an applicant is laying out their site, they hopefully will look at the higher champion trees, make sure they save those, and kind of go down the order so that the ones that potentially are allowed to be removed are the lower, on the priority list. Secondly, is we want to make clear who has the authority to approve removal of champion trees and evaluating that. And so, staff has a role and council has a role, and I'll get into that. This is the priority list, and the first priority listed is any upper story tree that's 40 inches caliber or greater, or any understory tree that's 15 inches or greater. So, these are more, the more significant champion trees on the site. Then the second order priority is the grouping, when you have two or more of these champion trees together. And what I mean by grouping is when they share the same critical root zone. Then the last of the top three is a grouping of a champion tree and a specimen tree, where you might have a champion tree that's adjacent to a buffer, and there's a specimen tree that's right near there, that tree potentially would be a higher priority to save. Then we get to the next tier, and if you take item four, which are trees that are 40 inches in caliber, or any understory tree that's less than 15 inches in caliber, then we'll take the next three as if they fall in that category, this would be the priority. One is location in a predominant, a prominent area on the site, which are those that are along public roadways, are surrounded by homes, or adjacent to public greenways, or highly visible. So, that would be the top of these three. And then, the middle would be those that are located adjacent to required open space. And why is that important? Well, in order to maybe expand a forest stand, it provides more protection for that champion tree, because in a, in more of a stand, but also provides more, a greater area of open space instead of just linear, linear open space. And then, the last of the priority list is those that are in less prominent areas at the rear of lots or building sites. So, with regard to approval authority, the director can approve certain things, and then the council can approve certain things. The director or the staff, you know, after all the modifications that are allowed in this ordinance, and I'll get to that in just a minute, are used up, like one of the modifications is buffer reductions or buffers between uses. If, you know, if all modifications like that are used up, and the infrastructure and site design conflicts are impacting more than 25% of the critical root zone due to infrastructure or, you know, site design stuff, and then those trees can be allowed to be removed. The second part is after all the modifications are used and the required open space limit is met, that means that it's either 30% or greater of the open space on a site, or in the town center, or the redevelopment site, if it's 15% or greater, then those remaining champion trees can be removed. So, those are the two circumstances where the staff could approve those. Council has the authority. If you have a larger champion tree, which is 40 caliber inches or greater, and understory tree, 15 caliber inches and greater, or any champion tree grouping that the applicant is wanting to remove, that they do not fall into these above category, like the, you know, conflict with infrastructure. So, if they, they're clearly could be saved, you know, they want to go to council and ask for removal of those. Or if you haven't reached the cap of required open space on your site, like 30% in those sites that are not in the town center or redevelopment sites, then you'd have to go to council and, you know, justify removal of those other champion trees. So, that's the approval authority, and we envision and predict that most of the development community will focus on protecting those larger trees, and probably with the enough flexibility that we have in the ordinance, they should be able to just work directly with staff on developing their sites. But there might be an exception. We want to make sure there was an avenue if somebody said, hey, I really want to go and see if I can adjust my site. So, this is an avenue to go to council if they wanted to. This is, when we talk about the cap of required open space, this is what is included in that open space. That would be all buffers, streetscapes, floodplains, open space required through zoning conditions, champion tree protection areas, and community gathering spaces. And the reason we chose those as the required open space, meaning that 30% or 15%, is that most of these areas are required to have trees in them and are protected. So, we want to have that similarity, that you're already saving a bunch of trees elsewhere on the site. The next important, one of the important sections of this ordinance is providing that flexibility within a site. And most of these things I'm going to go over, if it wasn't a champion tree site, they'd have to go through the town council process for a judicial hearing to have these adjusted. So, we're actually taking it out so that staff could approve those if they're able to save the champion tree. So, it's a pretty significant incentive and provides an opportunity for flexibility. But there's caveats that they must be used in priority order, and I'll go through those. And they're only used to the extent needed. So, this is a listing of the modifications and reductions. One would be, the first one would be reduction up to 25% of the parking requirements. And of course, we're not saying that you have to go to 25% because we want to make sure that the developer understands their business, and whether or not they could support a reduction would be something that they could set forth. But we're not going to say, hey, you know, why aren't you doing that full 25%? So, it's more up to 25%. The next option would be interior non-residential buffers, or interior buffers within a mixed-use development may be reduced or eliminated. So, if you've got an area that you're saving champion trees, you can take that area and take it out of these interior buffers or buffers within a mixed-use development. The next modification would be linear parking lot islands. We have a requirement that within a parking lot, you have to have every two to three bays, you have to have a linear parking strip of 10 to 15 feet, plant it with trees to break up parking lot areas. This would allow you to reduce or eliminate those. You would still have parking lot trees, you just wouldn't have them in a linear island. We're not doing away with no parking lot trees. We're just saying that you have more flexibility with designing your site. The fourth one is areas used to preserve champion trees may be used to meet the community gathering space requirements. So, the town has, with all developments, have a certain area of community gathering space. And so, we would just credit you, if you're saving a champion tree, that would be your community gathering space requirement. Perimeter buffers that are not adjacent to existing single-family developments may be reduced to no less than 20 total feet, provided the critical root zone of a specimen trees, specimen trees are not adversely impacted, and there's sufficient room to plant the required buffer. I know that's a lot of language, but we want to make sure that you're not reducing buffers that are required adjacent to single-family, because that's real important to keep, maintain the integrity of the single-family developments. But we also want to provide that flexibility, you know, if you're not adjacent to single-family to go down. A lot of it's going to depend on, if you have a type A buffer, we want to make sure if you go down to 20 total feet, you're going to be able to put enough plants in there to meet that requirement. So, we'll have to just kind of look at that on a case-by-case basis to make sure that, you know, going down to the 20 total feet, you're still able to achieve the buffer requirements. We do have a setback from buffers and streetscapes in our ordinance, and the next modifications would be that you could eliminate that, provided you're not impacting the critical reasons of a specimen tree. So, it's real important to note that we don't want to, you know, save a champion tree and maybe, you know, significantly impact a couple of specimen trees, so you're kind of maybe losing ground then. So, we want to make sure the caveat was in there, that we want to save those specimen trees within those buffers and streetscapes. Then, within the conservation residential overlay district, there are certain requirements about how the open spaces are laid out within those subdivisions. And so, this gives enough flexibility for, within those conservation overlay districts, that you could have a champion tree saved area that wouldn't be contiguous with all the other open space, which is a requirement on the conservation. So, it provides more flexibility in that district, and you'll still get, you still will be able to get credit for that, for bonus open space. The next one is buffers and streetscape areas to be used for bio retention areas. And I'll give you an example. If you go down Kildare Farm, across from, near the Taco Bell, across the street at the CVS Pharmacy there, they have a bio retention area that's in the streetscape, provides for stormwater management, but also provides for tree planting. So, you get the full width of the streetscape, but you get certain plants that thrive well within a bio retention area. So, the tree planting would still be delivered in a streetscape. But it just provides developers some more flexibility to move things around, instead of having a separate stormwater device, they could use the buffer as a stormwater and a buffer at the same time. The ninth one is required streetscape areas may be reduced. I put it in here as different ranges, because like in a conservation subdivision, you have to have an 80-foot streetscape. Well, that could potentially be reduced to 50 in a conservation subdivision. And within a residential subdivision along arterial could be 50 feet, but that could be reduced to 30 feet. And then, a, along a collector roadway, it's a 30-foot requirement, or non-residential streetscape is 30 feet, could be reduced to 15 feet. But you're still, and when you do those reductions, you actually have to put in more plantings so that it compensates the reduction in width. But this, this again, provides more flexibility with the site. The 10th allowable modification would be to look at certain requirements that we have in our ordinance, dealing with connectivity index, or circulation standards, or cross-access. Certain things that we look at and do a trade-off, you know, like for example, there's a certain width, throat width to entranceway, you know, maybe, I think it's like 150 feet to 200 feet. That potentially, if that could be reduced maybe 50 feet, you might be able to save a champion tree by making the throat a little bit narrower, shorter. So, it gives staff some flexibility to look at the site. We want to make sure we don't do something that's going to jeopardize public safety, but there may be certain things that we could do and work with the developer to save champion tree while maintaining the integrity of our ordinance. And the last thing would be if you've used all those, and you still have some champion trees to save, you could reduce the critical root zone from the way it is today, is one foot, 1.25 feet per caliber inch out to only one foot per caliber inch. So, those are the modifications. I know that's a lot, but just wanted to let you know how thorough it is and how much flexibility there is, so that there is a lot of opportunity for the applicant to rearrange their site to hopefully save trees and still get the yield they were trying to achieve as well. So, when you remove a healthy champion tree on the site, there are requirements to plant back inch for inch. So, for example, you have a 36-inch champion tree removed, you have to plant 36 inches of trees back on the site, you know. And so, what this section deals with is where you get the credit for, if you preserve some healthy hardwoods and our pines or whatever that are a certain caliber that you wouldn't be required to save elsewhere, they wouldn't be in required buffer areas, you can get up to 150% credit for those inches of trees there, which I think is a good incentive to, you know, if they have some areas that they can set aside. If not, all the new trees that they have to plant must be installed on-site. However, we have certain spacing requirements, and sites might get tight, and they might not be able to achieve all the plants on the site. And so, the first option, if they can't, is to install trees on town sites or public sites, such as in, excuse me, medians or town parks or other facilities. Then, if that's not able to achieve that, then they can install trees on another site throughout the town, somewhere in the town, that would be in an RA-protected area, which would be a buffer or streetscape. The exception to these requirements would be that in town center or redevelopment sites, you only need to install on-site up to three-inch caliber trees meeting the space limits. So, once they do that, they don't have to go off-site to do it. So, the last section is amendments to definitions. One of the important changes in the champion tree definition is all ponds have to be at least 40 inches in caliber in order to qualify as a champion tree. And I think that our discussion with the board and within staff and feedback from the development community is that we feel like that some of these pine trees, you know, that they don't seem to be as highly rated as the hardwoods. And so, we feel like that they should be. And so we feel like that they should be bigger in size, they're more popular in the town. So we would think that a bigger sized pine tree as well as a tree that's more defined that has a greater tree canopy would need to qualify for a champion tree. We also raised today, the caliber inches of a champion tree is 30. We raised that to 32 for those upper stories. And we added a under-story tree, champion tree of 12 inches caliber inches or greater. And as discussed with you before, we took the champion tree, state champion tree list, and we did an average of that, of those champion trees, the state champion trees, and came up with 32 for the upper story and 12 for the under-story. So trees like this, the big hardwoods on-site would be able to be saved, incorporate into the site. The pine trees would have to be larger in size and typically more fuller to meet the champion tree definition. And incorporating trees like this, dogwoods that are at least 12 inches in caliber in size, to be able to save those on-site. It's not all under-story trees that are required to be saved. And we're only talking with the specialist, the forester within the NC State, getting his advice. These are the trees that are mostly found within, in our area. And so we limited to dogwoods, watercultural cherries, red buds, silverbell, and serviceberry trees. And those are the more prevalent trees within our community. And so that kind of limits it, so it's not so broad that you're inventory every little thing. And so I think this is a good list to work from. And the last thing is caliber. How caliber, which is a measurement of the diameter of the tree, how that is measured. We made a change because certain trees might be growing on a slope, they may be leaning or it might fork below the height that you're measuring. So we want to make sure there are some details so when they do the survey, they know how to appropriately measure this. And this was from the American Forest Association that has this type of measurement that we drew upon. And so that concludes staff's presentation. Appreciate your patience. But we want to be ready for questions after the public hearing. But again, this public hearing is not a required public hearing, but something that the board and staff felt like was important since this is a real important change in ordinance to allow a public hearing at planning and zoning board to hear any reaction that people have. And after the public hearing, we'll be here to answer questions and recommend you move forward a recommendation to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to open the public hearing. And since our staff is our applicant, we can begin with anyone else that would like to address us on this case.
Whoa, step back a little bit. Members of the board, my name is Suzanne Harris. I'm the Government Affairs Staff for the Home Builders Association of Raleigh-White County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I recognize it wasn't a required public hearing, so we appreciate you letting us have the chance to talk to you tonight. I would like to start off with some thanks to the staff for being open to comments and suggestions for holding some stakeholder meetings. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to have some input in the decisions that are going forward, that do affect our members. I did provide Ricky with comments in advance of some changes that they made, and I appreciate that some of those were incorporated. There are still some areas of the ordinance that we have concerns with, and that's what I'd like to just touch on briefly here. As I was listening to the presentation, you know, I was, one of the things I was going to talk about was the term reasonable development. And so as I was listening to the ordinance and thinking to myself, okay, well, I can see how there are all these different modifications that are available and potentially could see how that would translate into the reasonable development of the lot, but I'm not sure because there hasn't been an opportunity to take this proposed ordinance and maybe try to apply it to some test cases. And ultimately, when I finish talking tonight, that's probably, that's what I'm going to be asking you to consider doing before making this an ordinance, is to take a look at some test cases. Because that term reasonable development obviously can be somewhat subjective. And I know the modifications themselves, I think, do try to address that by putting some boundaries around what, you know, what can happen and how much land can be, if you will, taken through the saving of trees. Also, there was a concern that I had with the term of no practical alternative location. And that was actually, it's now a strike-through in the ordinance. And I appreciate the staff kind of looking back at that and removing that, which I think would help because I was concerned that that exercise would translate into a lot of iterations by the development community of trying to revamp and try different alternative and another alternative. And eventually, the time and the money that's put into that would just make a project not feasible. There is priority order in the criteria that you saw for the champion trees, but I still don't really see in the text, although stuff is alluded to when it comes to significant trees, specimen trees, and significant vegetation, it's relatively ambiguous. So I'm not really sure how that's, there's like the term that they want to, you know, include that in the preservation of a site or consider it, but then it's not really discussed in as much detail unless I'm just maybe misreading stuff. So those terms, significant trees, specimen trees, and significant vegetation, I'm not quite clear on what's being required as far as that's concerned. We do appreciate the flexibility that's been included in the ordinance that Ricky went through that can seem like a lot. But, you know, the test projects, again, I think is what would help to flesh out, perhaps going back and looking at some site plans that were recently approved and seeing how this ordinance would have affected those one way or the other. And my other concern that I like to bring forward is the decision of the increase to the champion tree definition. I know the under-story tree was added, and I appreciate that they've put some boundaries around what is considered a champion under-story tree. But when we're talking about the upper-story trees going from 30 to 32, that was, that was the biggest concern that my members brought to us, was just the flat-out 30 inches. So then they go to 32 inches and the theory, the methodology behind that was to take the average. And I think I heard Ricky say they took the average and went with that. But my understanding, it was the average, and then that was taken in half. So it's actually 50 percent of the average. And although there's a method there, it's still just kind of like, hey, that, you know, not to be disrespectful, but, you know, kind of sounds like, okay, well, that sounds like pretty good, and let's average it, take half of it, 32, let's go with it. But other than that, there's not really a science behind why is 32 any better than 30 or any worse than 36. So I just, I mean, again, and it might find out that when we do these case studies, that might show to be a great number. But until that's done, I'm not sure that would be the case. And so I've already asked, you know, a couple of times here, I think that's how I would like to sum it up, is just to ask that before you move this forward, that you just take the time to ask.
I have to ask you to stop now because you've run out of time.
And I appreciate the time, and so do my members. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address us on this case? Anyone at all? Seeing no one approach the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this case up for board questions. And before we get into the board questions, I want to point out that we've been working in work sessions and regular meetings on this topic now for well over six months. So if it looks as if we don't have a lot of questions, it's just because we're worn out. We've been reviewing this for a long time. That said, do we have any additional questions?
I have a couple, I guess. Mr. Barker, are you prepared to address the methodology behind the new definition of champion trees in any more detail based on?
Yes, I'll put a little bit more detail to it. Ms. Harris was right in sense that we took an average, but it was, we took the list of state champion trees for upper story.
Those were by species, right?
By species. We added those together and took an average of that. Then we did cut it in half, which ended up yielding 32 inches. And the same thing with the methodology for upper story, under-story tree. And I guess that's, you know, you could do things a variety of ways, determine, you know, what you want to choose as a champion tree. You know, from the town standpoint, we've been using that 30-inch caliber tree as a champion tree for, yeah, over a decade. And I guess looking at those trees and the size of those trees, those are pretty significant, you know, trees with a pretty large canopy. And we just felt like that felt like a legitimate number to use. But also, it's important to note that that's why we really put a lot of effort in modifications so that there'd be a lot of flexibility to trade-off and save those trees on-site. So, but you know, you could use a higher number. We did, we did use a higher number for the pine trees, which, looking on sites, those are, those do come up a lot on sites as champion trees. And today, with this new ordinance, will be less champion trees potentially than they are today because we're, you know, going with a larger pine tree. So we did do something to address their concerns, but not as far as they suggested. And also, I'd like to answer the question about specimen trees. And we didn't, I didn't highlight the section on saving specimen trees because we weren't changing that in the sense that one of the things that if you do save a specimen tree, you actually can get credit for one and a half of the area out of buffers and streetscapes. So with champion trees, we have special legislation that allows us to require saving those trees. With specimen trees, not as much. And so what we did is provide a greater incentive, but not a requirement to save the significant trees. So that's, it is mentioned in there just because we're updating the entire section. There are mentions about specimen trees. And there are some changes with regard to tree survey mentioning specimen trees. But for the most part, like for example, if there's a grouping with a champion tree and a specimen tree, and that was one of the ones they chose to save, they potentially, if they wanted to do that, they could take the area for the significant tree that they're saving the critical root zone on and take one and a half times the area to save that. So it actually is a greater advantage if you're saving that tree. Does that answer your question or question that was asked?
Yes, it very well. And my other question is, if this were delayed, as was suggested at the public hearing, I presume the current ordinance, which we characterize as the interim ordinance, would continue?
That's right.
And would there be, from your perspective, you know, benefits or drawbacks in delaying this for some relatively short amount of time?
No, I just think that there are potential people out there that are maybe ready to submit plans that may like a little bit more flexibility. But we could allow that flexibility even if they submit and fall under the old ordinance. If this gets adopted while they're in the cycle, they might be able to revert and revert back to the new ordinance. So, and we have, we have looked at sites, you know, we haven't taken the time to do a sketch landscape-wise and layout sites, and we just really, truly haven't had the resources right now to do that. But we have looked at sites that have been approved and looked at buffers and said, okay, that tree is real close to that buffer, and we could have reduced that and been able to save it. So I think, I think that, you know, I think that we'll find out that if you're saving an area of a champion tree and you can take that area out elsewhere in a site, there should be enough design flexibility to work that through. It just, it seems like it should work. But we can, it's just up to you all, if you want us to take some more time and put the resources to it, we can see what we can do and bring something back to you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Just wondering to elaborate on this. In the reviews that we got from other stakeholders, was there any comments that were analogous to the Home Builders Association representative comments? I mean, did the developer community see any problems with what we were?
Well, I didn't get specific comments from the development community. They had other questions about measurements of trees and other things of that sort, but not as specific as that. But I know that they're, I'm not sure who Suzanne is speaking for, if she's speaking for some of the people that feel like they're, that she's speaking for them, I don't know.
Just a verification. Under 7210 allowable modifications and reductions, is this an accurate statement? Section A has, looks like nine current modifications or reductions allowable. And that's in the existing ordinance that we have. But then under section B, there are 11 new modifications or reductions available for developers? So there's 19 total, and there's, I'm sure there's subsections within here. So we're looking at, in addition of at least 11 new modification or reduction capabilities?
The top ones are, those are more specifically related to non-champion trees. And the item B relate to the modifications for champion trees.
Okay. So, okay, so disregarding section A, regarding champion trees, there are 11 new exemptions or modifications for reduction that home builders could take advantage of over the previous ordinance.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Like I said, if, as we get development plans in and we start working through, working through those, and we're always as staff, open to feedback from the community and, you know, we, as you know, you see a lot of ordinance amendments. And so we are very open to changing things that make sense or things that are not working out after they're implemented. We're, we're happy to kind of revisit that and say, hey, this is not quite working and as we had planned and.
Seeing no more questions, I'm going to ask if we have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion. I move that we forward LDO amendments round 27, and specifically those are, LDO... those are, LDO round 27 to Town Council with a recommendation for approval as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other applicable plans and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a, a motion and a second discussion.
I'll, I'll say that the reason for the motion is, as Mr. Barker essentially has stated, I think this is all about achieving a balance. And I think this does achieve a balance. We have spent many hours, this board, staff has spent probably countless hours, council has reviewed the proposed ordinance with staff. And I think, as Mr. Gascoigne pointed out, there's a lot of flexibility here and it's likely some things will need tweaks. But this is round 27 and those can be done if necessary in, in future ordinance amendments if required. And as I said, I think this achieves the balance and I'm, I'm persuaded that it does. So that's my motion.
Other comments?
Well, I would just say that the reason I second this is as much about the process as it is about the product. The product, as, has been already stated, does provide a lot of flexibility. But more so, as we've gone back and forth, there's been so much reaction to stakeholder involvement and comments. And, and staff has been incredibly adaptive in, in trying to work in what everyone has, has suggested and, and given as feedback. So I think what we've got here is a product that takes all of that into consideration. And I'm, I'm quite relieved to see that we're, we're going to move forward this, with this because I, I think this has, has really taken into account just about everything that, that has come before it.
And if I could add, because I forgot earlier, I think there is some amount of time between now and when council will consider this, that, you know, staff and/or prospective applicants could do some, some test cases and, and provide feedback to council if those tweaks should arise.
Yeah, we can look into that. Other comments?
I agree with my, my counterparts here. I think that Ricky, you and Robins, you staff have done an excellent job of gathering information and bringing information back to us. I've learned more about trees than I thought I ever wanted to. But I think that the test cases would be something that would be, would be appreciated by the citizens of the town of Cary. But you guys have done a great job.
Other comments?
I can make a note too, before you take a vote. Because this is, you know, somewhat complicated, you all had several work sessions on it yourselves, this recommendation for it, the council most likely end up at a work session with them instead of going directly to a meeting. Because it's, it is real complicated. And I want, staff has recommended that we kind of sit down with them and kind of do what we did with you all. And so that might be something that we'll see if we can put together some examples before the work session.
Sounds like a wise decision. Other comments? And again, I will reemphasize for anyone that's wondering why we're not talking more about this. We have been over and over and over this a number of times. And while it may not be perfect, it's a whole heck of a lot better than where we started. And given the fact that we passed a tree ordinance, I think in January, and we're going to be looking at passing another one within six months, we have pretty good clear evidence that if we didn't get it quite perfect, we can always go back and tweak it later. With that said, I'm going to call this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion that stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And we're going to move on to our next case, which I believe is case D3, which is 14 REZ 07, 07, excuse me, Young property at Old Apex Road. And Ms... Hi. Please go ahead and educate us.
Good evening. This is a public hearing on a request to rezonate about 35 acres located at 1340 and 1346 Old Apex Road. Here's a vicinity map. You can see the property in relation to Old Apex Road, West Chatham Street. This is the Cary Christian School, a short distance to the north, the railroad farther to the east. This is just a closer aerial. There is an existing residence on the site in this portion. And there was a swim club located on the property at one point. And then you can see the existing lake that's on the site. The land use plan calls for low density residential development on this site. The density within this designation for the plan is one to three units per acre. The existing zoning is R40 and a small portion of R20 where the existing residence is located. The proposed zoning is transitional residential conditional use. The proposed zoning conditions include limiting the use on the site to detached residential, the maximum of 50 lots and a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet. This translates to about 1.5 units per acre. The minimum side setback would be five feet. And then there would be, the conditions include a type A opaque buffer adjacent to lots on Solstice Circle, which is development to the south of this property. This is an exhibit provided by the applicant to illustrate the zoning conditions. And you can see Solstice Circle, which has access to the south and the buffer that's proposed along that common property line. This shows the notification map. The property owners within 400 feet were notified of the request. Community feedback that was received included one protest petition. However, there were no reasons cited in that petition. We received one call asking for the area to be, more area to be preserved as open space. And there were two calls from citizens that supported the request. This shows the protest petition area, the area in blue, properties that would be eligible for a valid protest. We did, the protest petition that was, was received was outside of that area, so it is not a valid protest petition. At the public hearing, which took place on April 24th, discussion included lot size, the perimeter buffer to the south, and discussion regarding preservation of open space in the vicinity of the existing pond as a zoning condition. In response to the comments from the public hearing, the applicant did offer an additional zoning condition, which is why this is a public hearing this evening. This is the exhibit that goes along with that. And you can see an additional 2.5 acres of open space, which is basically shown in the footprint of where the existing pond is located. And again, and that new proposed condition would be maintaining a contiguous area of 2.5 acres of common open space with uses limited to neighborhood amenities as allowed by the land development ordinance. This map shows stream buffers on the site according to Cary's GIS maps. And of course, these features would be more clearly delineated at the time of the site plan. And at that time, any required buffers would be determined and incorporated into the site plan or subdivision plan. According to Cary's Parks and Greenways Plan, there are no parks and recreation facilities or greenways that impact the site. According to Cary's Transportation Plan, Old Apex Road is a major thoroughfare. There is a C-Trans fixed route or a proposed fixed, C-Trans fixed route along Old Apex Road that would be there in the future. And that concludes staff's comments. At this time, I would call on the applicant for presentation and any additional comments. And following the public hearing will be available for questions.
Thank you. So at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing and we will begin with a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. My name is Glenda Top with Glenda Stoppin Associates. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, the Young family. Staff did an excellent job going over the overall proposed rezoning. So I'm just going to touch on a couple of points and be brief. The current zoning is R40 and there is a small portion of R20. And as we've heard in other meetings before, the R40 zoning is typically seen as a holding zoning district until development is ready to occur on the site. The land use plan does call for low density, which is one to three units per acre. By zoning condition, we have limited the number of lots to 50, which based on the acreage, the maximum density is roughly 1.42 units per acre, which in this particular case is on the very low end of the low density. And of course, we are in compliance with the land use plan. As Mary pointed out, there are six zoning conditions. We had two neighborhood meetings. The first meeting was with the property owners, all the property owners within 400 feet of the proposed rezoning. We then had a follow-up neighborhood meeting where we invited property owners immediately adjacent to the site, those most affected. Between our neighborhood meetings and comments made at the public hearing, we added a couple of conditions. One, with the adding of the open space. And two, we did increase the buffer along Solstice to a 30-foot buffer. And, and again, it is a, a type A buffer. Just want to point out that we do believe that the TR zoning is appropriate for the site. It allows flexibility in how the site can be developed. And it is providing the opportunity to have the additional open space and also maintaining elements of the site that are important, not only to the family, but also to the adjacent property owners and the town of Cary. Also want to point out that the, the family members, the, the daughters of Herb Young, it was not an easy decision, but they did make a decision that it was time for them to look at selling their family's property. They were very deliberate in the process that they followed. It was important to the sisters that the property to be developed in a manner consistent with their father's vision. As many of you know, this, for those who have been in Cary for a while, it was known as the Cary Swim Club. It, it, it had a real history, as did their father, Mr. Young. In closing, want to point out that the, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the adopted land use plan. It is consistent with the adjacent residential development in the area. Also, it is our opinion that the proposed conditions will ensure that the adjoining properties are adequately protected and not negatively impacted. And in fact, we see the, the proposed development to be an asset, not only to this part of Cary, but also to the town overall. And again, with the conditions that are being offered, we believe that the, the vision and the intent of what Mr. Young and the entire Young family want to see on the property can be realized. That concludes my presentation. We ask for your support. And, and I am here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to us on this case, please?
Good evening, council members. My name is Ahong. I've lived in Southest Circle for more than 10 years. And I'm here to represent our, our community. There's more than 12 family neighborhood on the Southest Circle to voice our concern regarding potential rezon development behind our house. So Southest Circle neighborhood extremely concerned about any road design proposal behind our property. We strongly object any road design adjacent to our houses that will connect Old Apex and West Chatham Street. The reason because, because when we go to the, the meetings, the lady previously mentioned, we see the proposed site plan. And I would think that site plan can be highly likely in the development. And there's specific, specifically, there's a road designed behind Southest property. And specifically, I want to address the concern in terms of this road construction. We base our concern based on several factors. The first factor is kids' safety concern. Second factor is the dress, potential, potential drastic change of the living surrounding area. The third concern is about proper buffer concern. Let me expand it a little bit more. Regarding the kids' safety and the safety of living environment, currently, there are kids living on the Southest Circle and the Southest Circle neighborhood, especially those facing to the rezoned property is attractive to families with kids in primitive age, namely infants, preschoolers, and elementary school kids. These kids are extremely vulnerable to an environment with, with exposure to public risk. Currently, there's a road in front of houses with access to the West Chatham Street, which is a main traffic street. Another road construction behind our houses can greatly sandwich this property to dual public access. The risk exposure to our kids will be overwhelming. Moreover, the Southest Circle property are built on small lots, which is .12 acre with a small backyard. The proximity between the house and the road can threaten the physical safety of anybody living in the house. We therefore object any road construction directly adjacent to our property. Second, we're very concerned about road construction behind our backyard will substantially and permanently alter the safe and quiet living environment at present. Safety and quiet neighborhood are prominent factors when we originally made the decision of a property purchase. This is a drastic change of our surroundings potentially, which means it changed from a private wood backyard to a backyard with potential driving access to the public. We're concerned that such change, if not given sufficient consideration, can ultimately lead to property depreciation and the neighborhood deterioration in the long run. Third, property buffer concern. We appreciate that the property developers and owners propose a 30-feet, a 30-foot opaque buffer to be established. However, based on our observation in the surrounding neighborhood community, which means Oxford Hunt and Bond Park surrounding neighborhood, in recent road alternations, the distance is mostly reserved for construction alternation for exclusive walking and jogging road access. Southest Circle neighborhood in general are sympathized with the property owner, which means the Youngs family on Old Apex Road in property rezon request. However, we also like to be heard of intense concern of site plan and construction, which may impose high risk of undermining a safe, quiet, and continual neighborhood living condition. Thank you very much for listening from us.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address us on this case, please?
Good evening, council. Thanks for the opportunity.
The AB guys are very particular. Please, I hear about it later.
My name's Matt Bingham. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I live at 132 Solstice. I've lived in Cary since 1969, so I'm familiar with growth. And, you know, I think Cary has generally done a good job with smart growth. This is the first time that it's been, you know, in my backyard. I grew up going to Triangle Swim Club. I actually have swum in that old pond back in the time. So, you know, it's, when I moved in, you know, that was one of the things that I liked about. And I understood, you know, sooner or later, it would, would likely be developed. I, I think that, that what I've observed, I haven't had a chance to go to every meeting, unfortunately. I think that what I've observed, I haven't had a chance to go to every meeting, unfortunately, but from what I've observed, Polte Homes has kind of given very little. They came up with a plan, and they justified that plan, and they talked about all the other bad things that could have happened there. But in terms of, you know, the give and take that I was thinking that we might see in terms of they put something out, and then the neighbors say, well, how about this? There's been very little of that. And, you know, I'll say, for example, setting aside some space, okay? Well, you already had a pond there, you know, and so now you've, what, made a document where you're going to set that aside, but, you know, in terms of the actual way the site is developed, you know, there's really no difference there. To get to my point, in terms of, you know, compromises, what I and some of my neighbors would really like to see is instead of a thirty-foot buffer, a fifty-foot buffer. And just in terms of, you know, what Polte's put out there and the amount of concessions that have been made, I really don't think that's very much. And if you look at, you know, the amount of space, say, between the back of my house and you kind of buffer a road, a house, all the way down to the pond, you know, that's what it's going to be, buffer, road, house, pond. There's a lot of space back there, and I think they could easily give up another 20 feet on that buffer, and that would be, do a lot for the quality of life of, you know, my friends and neighbors that live on that road, as well as my own family. So, that's my main thing, and I appreciate you all taking the chance to listen to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, name's Bobby Anderson with Polte Group. I just wanted to respond to a couple of comments. Based on our first meeting that we had with the neighbors, there were a couple of concerns that came up. First one was traffic. The second one was, we were showing on the proposed site plan because, in my opinion, having a neighborhood meeting without showing some intent of what you're trying to do is sort of misleading. So, their concern was having the traffic go out on the West Chatham for several reasons. One is because it'd be a cut through for the neighbors behind Solstice, which we understood. And the second issue that was brought up was it would create a U-turn for people that came out on the West Chatham. They would go west to make a U-turn and come back and go east because it's median divided. So, what we came back with our second meeting with just the adjacent property owners was to go ahead and cul-de-sac that road that came back there to that side of that lot, which would eliminate the cut through and eliminate the U-turns. Now, at the second meeting, you know, we also added thirty-foot opaque A buffer. And after that meeting, everything seemed fine. They were appreciative of the fact that, you know, we able to listen to them in terms of the cut through, as well as addressing the open space. And also, please keep in mind with this site, with this being reduced to single-family 50 units, with that pond being kept in the middle, there's also a great deal of open space on this site because of the hundred-foot buffers, sewer easements, and other buffers that go up through the site that have provided an enormous amount of open space on this site. So, while I appreciate his comment about wanting the 50 feet, the 50 feet gets you very close to pushing up against the hundred-foot buffer that we have to keep from the pond. So, it's just not a 50-foot buffer on that pond, it's a hundred-foot buffer that's required to be undisturbed. So, I just, you know, wanted to address in terms of how that, the process went through with the neighbors and what we have done, we feel on our side to, we're going to submit the site plan with a cul-de-sac. It's not going to show a cut through, and then we'll work with staff to get that worked out. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to us? I'm sorry, you get one chance.
They don't know who the land he's talking about like you didn't.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You had your time, and we can't go back at it. I'm sorry. Anyone else like to speak? Seeing no one approach the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this case up for board questions, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I can just make one clarifying comment in response to some of the comments made through the hearing. Any comments related to a specific subdivision design that may have been discussed, to only to the extent that there are zoning conditions that nail these issues down, is that something that should be taken into account with the rezoning? So, any issues related to the road location, connectivity, whether or not this road is a cul-de-sac or a cut through, those are all issues that are addressed at the time of the site or subdivision plan in accordance with the requirements of the land development ordinance. So, I just wanted to make sure that point was clear.
I took the words right out of my mouth. I was about to say the same thing. Okay, board questions. Mr. Miller?
Mr. Shaw.
Or Mr. Shaw, I'm sorry.
Yes, as far as, we're getting right back to the cut through and onto West Chatham. Is there sufficient, is there any road frontage of the site property onto West Chatham?
My understanding with that is that it's a point. At best, it's maybe a point that connects here, but there's not road frontage, there is not frontage on Chatham on the property sufficient to provide a road connection on the property.
So, even if the applicant or perhaps some future owner wanted to put a connection onto Chatham, they don't own the property. They would not be able to.
That would be, the owners of the adjacent properties that own where any right-of-way would have to go through would have to be involved with that.
Okay. Then the other thing, as far as the open space, what is allowed to be, which is mostly or appears to be contiguous, same place as the pond, but what would be allowed to be there, other than a pond?
But the way that the condition is written, that would just be open space, common area, recreation-type facilities as part of the development. Given the location within the footprint of the pond, it appears to be the intent to maintain the pond, showing the open space in that, within that footprint.
The obvious intent, but it would not be, under this, it would not be lawful for any future owner to, say, put a building there or roadway or anything like that?
That's correct. That would be the open space.
Okay, thank you.
The home that's existing, does that have any historic value?
It's, the home was built in the 40s, I believe it was. There's some comments about that in your staff report, however, it's not on the inventory.
Okay, thank you.
What is the required buffer along the homes at Solstice Circle where the applicant is offering thirty?
The required buffer through that area would be a 20-foot buffer, 20-foot type B buffer.
And the applicant is offering a 30-foot?
30-foot type A.
Thank you.
In that case, do we have someone ready to make a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to the board for case number 14 REZ 07. To Town Council with recommendation for approval as it is consistent with comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and it's reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the reason I made the motion is basically, to put it simply, I like the project. I was, at one time, somewhat concerned about the preservation of the pond. I know that that is the intent to preserve it, but in the, hopefully unlikely event that this property through bankruptcy or other reasons goes to some other owner, would it be preserved? And while there's no specific statement in here, condition referring to that, preservation of the open space, that particular condition makes it virtually impossible for anybody to make any use that would provide additional profit, any reason to fill in or to destroy the pond. That, to me, is sufficient. But basically, I do like the density, the fact that it appears that there would be no connection to Chatham Street. I do like that and the other conditions of the zoning, so I made that motion.
Other comments?
And I second, because I too like the project, and I think it's going to be a great test case for the Champion Tree ordinance that we approved. So, but no, I think it's a great property for that area.
Other comments? Buck, you have something to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, this is one of those areas in Cary that has been surrounded by development over time, and I see it as just, again, a matter of time until something, in fact, does occur in this space. Given the development plan that's presented here, it seems certainly to be in keeping with the adjacent areas and is just a reasonable plan, and for that reason, I would support.
Someone else that wanted to say something?
Yeah, just a comment, kind of in line with what I've heard so far. I think this is a good rezoning of this property. I understand the concerns of the road behind these residential homes, and I think that's a valid concern. But as you all pointed out, from a pure rezoning standpoint, this is a pretty good rezoning. 1.5, some of the other conditions are right in line with what most people would love to have in their backyard, so I will support it. But I do understand the road issue, and hopefully at the appropriate time, say, plan and review and that type of thing, that issue can be addressed.
And maybe, let me just clarify for some that might have been confused by that. At this point, we really aren't looking specifically at where roads might go. That is a site plan stage that comes much later in the process, and so we really can't specify where that road might go north of the Solstice subdivision. When we have a site plan, we'll be in a better position to understand that. Mr. Miller?
My remarks have mostly been said. I'll just amplify them, that I think that the road is a valid concern, but as just stated, it's a site plan concern and not one that's really relevant for this rezoning, although we hear you. I think the buffer along Solstice that the applicant has offered is reasonable. It certainly could be larger, but at the same time, I think preserving the pond or the open space is tremendous on this site, and it's done by very low density of about 1.5 units per acre. And increasing the southern buffer, if that would jeopardize saving the pond, I think that's an easy trade-off for me, because I do think saving the pond, lake, open space is very important. The one hesitancy I might have had would have been with the Herb Young family home. I think it's historically significant because it was Herb Young's home, but is the family attempting to achieve his vision, and as pointed out, it is not on the Wake County or the Cary survey or inventory, so it's difficult, you know, to make a case that they ought to do that, and so I'll support the motion as well.
Other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to call us to vote all's in favor of the motion. As stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries eight to zero. And we are going to move to our next case, which is not a public hearing, and it is 14 REZ 02, the Cary Oaks subdivision. Mr. Nicholas?
Good evening. This is a rezoning associated with an owner-initiated request for annexation of approximately 12 acres of property located on Cary Oaks Drive and Holly Stream Court. Subject property is located outside the town of Cary extraterritorial jurisdiction, presently has Wake County zoning. Therefore, the property must be rezoned to apply initial Cary zoning in association with the annexation. Subject property is located off Holly Springs Road, approximately 3,000 feet southwest of the intersection with 1010 Road, within the Cary Oaks subdivision. As you can see in this aerial, this is a developed subdivision, and all the residential lots within development contain dwellings. The lots were approved under Wake County regulations as a cluster subdivision. There's open space to the north of the lots on Cary Oaks Drive and a small area south of the lots on Holly Stream Court. This slide shows the overall boundary of the Cary Oaks subdivision, outlined here in red. The purple shading represents the lots that are the subject of the request. The request includes 23 of the 26 residential lots within the subdivision and five open space parcels. All the residential lots within the existing development currently receive town of Cary sewer service, and water service is provided by a private system. As I said, four of the lots are outside town of Cary's ETJ and presently have a Wake County zoning designation of residential 30. Cary's land use plan designates the residential lots in this development as medium-density residential, which is a range of three to eight units per acre. The open space parcels are designated as parks and open space. Based on the size of the existing lots, the zoning designation of residential eight is proposed for the lots that contain the dwellings, and the open space parcels would be designated as resource recreation. According to Cary's GS maps, a portion of the development is impacted by a stream buffer. Cary's Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resource Facilities master plan shows a proposed greenway within the open space along the eastern portion of the subdivision. Since the property has already been subdivided and built, there may not be any greenway dedication as part of this rezoning. And the subdivision is located off Holly Springs Road, which is designated on Cary's comprehensive transportation plan as a major thoroughfare, and since the subdivision has already been constructed, there'd be no additional right-of-way dedication or road widening associated with this rezoning. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since this isn't a public hearing, we can open for questions right now.
Mr. Nicholas, can you help me with the rationale for the few excluded lots?
Well, like we said, this was driven by an annexation petition, and those three lots weren't interested at this time in annexation.
Okay, thank you. And I guess to follow up, it's a little bit more complexity. Does it cause any particular difficulties with, you know, the?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, we circulate, you know, the annexation request to other departments and look for feedback from them. We have not, nobody's indicated any problems with the way this would be serviced.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'd like to ask a question. This was developed under Wake County.
Yes.
Provisions, which are considerably less strenuous than ours can be. In particular, the developer didn't have to improve the roadway, didn't have to do any easement set aside for our greenway. So, effectively, they've gotten a break in development, and then they come in and ask for annexation after they've done the development not to Cary standards. I expect that this is precedent, but do we have a problem with it?
I mean, the developer's not the one asking for the annexation. It's now the individual homeowners that purchased the dwellings that are there, so it's not the developer anymore. It's the individual homeowners who've been there for years.
Do you have a feeling for what the motivation is to request annexation at this time?
I mean, they'd like to receive town services. Also, they pay a non-residential rate on their sewer, so they would be, receive a little bit lower rate on their sewer, but also receive other town services that they requested as well.
And I know this was asked at the town council meeting, but I'm going to ask it just to, for those, I think, three or four parcels that chose not to be included, when we're providing town service, are we just going to drive by them, or, you know, when the garbage truck comes along, are they just going to be instructed?
They wouldn't have our trash containers or recycling containers because they're not, they wouldn't be able to acquire those because they're not residences, so the town would not see them.
Okay, if we have a fire in the neighborhood, we're going to have Wake County, Swift Creek Fire Department come for those houses, and we're going to have Cary come for the rest?
Unless there was some agreement reached between the county and the town, but I think that would be the scenario, yes. And there's nothing that precludes them from not, you know, these owners that are not part of it now could certainly come in in the future at some point if they wanted to. So, there's nothing that precludes them from asking in the future.
Do you have a question?
Please.
First, that circular area, I believe, is that a well, the round area that's not included in the?
That's the well that serves the private water system.
And the residents of this would continue to use the private water system?
Correct. They haven't indicated any, no request to. They haven't indicated any, no request to connect the town water at this point.
And on the drawing that shows the zoning, the residents, this would be R8, and I presume the RR applies to what on the land use plan is shown in green?
Yes.
Okay. Is it possible for the residences not included in the rezoning, in the annexation, in the rezoning, to somehow purchase garbage collection service from the town of Cary as opposed to having a separate company service?
I'm not sure if that's possible or not. I'd have to check on that.
Okay. All right.
Other questions?
I just have another question on that circular area, and it's more from my education than anything else. But if that, is that part of its own unique parcel, or is that part of a larger parcel? And if so, can you get only parts of a parcel rezoned?
The, I mean, the circular parcels by itself, it's not part of this rezoning, because it's not being annexed, so...
So it's its own little parcel of land, separate deed and all that sort of...
Correct.
I asked earlier, do we have a precedent for, I know we have that fairly large development down by the water treatment plant that was developed under Wake County rules and has been trickling into Cary, you know, half a dozen lots at a time. Do we have other precedents where development is done specifically under Wake County rules, and then folks come in after the fact?
I'm not aware of any specific...
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I might answer your question. I live in one. And I'm right off of Walnut in Old Cary. And we were annexed. And there were people that fought the annexation, and there were people that wanted the annexation. And obviously Cary Police and Fire would service or go through our area prior to our annexation. And subsequent to our annexation, the city worked with us to come up with a plan for sewer and water to be put in. And we paid a development fee to attach to that sewer and water. And that was an individual decision on each homeowner's part. I'd just like to ask is, Mr. Nichols, do you know how old this development is?
I believe it was built in the early 90s. Is that correct? Yes.
Okay.
Early 90s.
So, for 20 years, they've lived in Wake County, and now they're kind of looking to, it seems primarily just reduce their cost of sewer. Is that pretty much the nub of the whole issue here for these homeowners?
Well, that and the other services they would receive.
But I mean, they're not getting Cary water. They're on a well system.
Correct.
They're not asking Cary to provide water and sewer.
They haven't at this point now?
Sewer's already there.
Sewer's already there. That was a requirement.
Yeah. But they could if they wanted to. They could request connection to water as well, right?
Yeah. I can provide some background here. We, as a staff, have been working with a contact person here with Cary Oaks. And they actually have met with the homeowner association and provided some feedback to them before. And the main reason is, is that given the taxes versus the rates they pay, many of them will be paying, actually getting money back by just paying town taxes. They're paying more toward utilities than they would paying taxes. And so, there is an economic advantage to annex into the town along with the services that Wayne has stated. So, we, as a town, are willing to meet with homeowners that are in these types of areas where they're already receiving one utilities and help them come into the town, because these types of properties are better served with municipal services than county services. And to answer your follow-up question about services, we typically have mutual aid agreements with the county. So, these things work out for those properties in there. Most likely, we'd work something out with the county for fire and emergency services. So, we've gotten systems in place to handle those types of things.
And is the parcel across Holly Springs Road in Cary?
That's the YMCA, yes.
That's the YMCA, but the other parcels are not?
That's correct.
So we're kind of creating a little peninsula of Cary and, you know, surrounded on three and three-quarter sides by Wake County.
As you know, we had a town-initiated annexation plan, but of course, the General Assembly voted to do that. So, this is probably the only way that we can encourage people. Like, the development next door is on the same system, is on a town sewer as well. So, they may see this subdivision doing it, and they might be encouraged to do it as well. So, we've got two other parts of subdivision there that are receiving town services, sewer service.
My concern specifically is we've been struggling for years with our donut holes here in Cary. You know, areas in the middle of town that are Wake County, aren't part of the town, and we've kind of annexed all around them. And I could see a situation where we just create another donut hole here to the north and east of this parcel. And do we have any strategy that suggests that we might want to, not want to be creating new donut holes?
Yeah, I think that, I think that, you know, we, as a town, had to evaluate these types of requests. And specifically, we, like Wayne said, that we do circulate this to the people that are going to be serving this development within the town. And they feel like, because they do have properties within the area, they're already serving, that they could adequately serve this with the resources they have, since they do have people that go by these areas already. So, but I think it's, when you have to weigh the balance of having these types of development being served by urban services for the public good, I think that they'll receive more appropriate services through the town of Cary than they are through Wake County with their types of services.
Can you help us understand how we got in a situation where we're providing Cary sewer to non-Cary annexed property, but not water?
Yeah. As Wayne has stated, this was developed under the county jurisdiction. At that time, they could do what are called cluster subdivisions, which would have wells and septic systems, or master, you know, septic syst, private septic system. And there's, back in the 90s, there were probably about four subdivisions like that that were in Wake County that were near where we were. And unfortunately, all of them, their sewer systems failed. And so, the town was asked to rescue them. And so, the town did talk with the neighbors and ended up connecting them to sewer services. And at that time, our policy was that for whatever factors, potentially some of these developments were not close enough to our jurisdiction to annex at the time. There's certain state laws, if the property is closer to another jurisdiction, we are not able to annex. And so, we ended up getting annexation agreements that they could annex in the future if we became contiguous to them, or if we deemed that we could serve the area. So, that's why it was, you know, provided services, it was more after the fact, after they'd already developed.
Mr. Evangelista, you got a look on your face like you really got to ask something.
So they're contiguous in that they are across the street from the Craft YMCA?
And the two interior cul-de-sac streets would become Cary streets along with that annexation? Is that correct?
I believe so, yes. Well, not necessarily, but...
I think you have the option to not, right?
They're still on the state-maintained system of streets. Now, there may be by agreement that the town would accept them from the state DOT, but that'd be a formal process we'd have to go through.
That's what I was, thank you.
Is there any significant difference between the, those streets and Cary standards?
I actually haven't been out to the site, but I'm assuming they're as built to DOT rural standards without curb and gutter. They're just paved with ditches, things like that. Again, Cary does have streets like that in our jurisdiction without curb and gutter and sidewalks, so we do accept those types of streets.
Okay.
If I could just comment on that, I do believe in the staff report, there was some mention of the fact that this road was actually 27 feet wide. And I remember looking at the description of Holly Springs Road, and I think it was 24 feet wide. And I was sort of like, oh, here we got a residential street that's wider than Holly Springs Road. That would be, you know...
Why is Holly Springs Road, is that narrow, is it really?
I drive it a lot, and, you know, I'd say it can be in places.
It's narrow. Yes. I've driven through this subdivision, the road, I mean, not actually having gotten down to measure anything. It looks good. It's, and it is obviously acceptable.
But like in, like in the case of our annexation, we were a donut hole. And our streets were probably constructed under Wake County standards. And if we wanted to have curb and gutter or sidewalks, we would have to have a certain percentage of the neighborhood agree that that was what they wanted to do, and then approach the town. Question that I have is that, you know, in a way, if you look at, back at that particular slide that showed Cary's city limits, have these other developments been constructed in the same way, in the sense that they are served with Cary sewer? So everything that surrounds this particular applicant site, the other thing that is northeast and northwest, are they on...
That are in the town limits now, or...
Do we know if they're on Cary sewer?
I'm not sure if they're in sewer or not.
And, Mr. Barker, when you said it was financially advantageous, were you talking about the city there or the applicants themselves?
The applicants. The applicants.
The applicants.
The homeowners.
Aren't they going to pay a higher tax rate in Cary?
Yes, but right now, the outside rate is significantly higher than the inside rates. And so, that's kind of how it works out.
So aren't we getting adequate revenue to equalize the reduction in cost of their sewer service? I mean, isn't it sort of a trade-off?
I'm not sure what your question is.
Well, we're back to why is this being done? And I think what I've been hearing is they just want to have a Cary sewer rate.
Uh-huh.
They're going to have higher taxes by becoming part of Cary? So we get an additional, we get an income that we weren't receiving previously in terms of tax revenue.
Correct. And then the rates drop down.
But we get a lower sewer rate.
And our sewer revenue goes down by a probably infinitesimally small amount.
No, the sewer rate could go down significantly.
Pardon me?
Outside rates are significantly higher. Up to three times.
Well, but my point is, the total income from the difference for these properties has got to be fairly small. How many properties are we talking about here?
Well, you sense of just the town impact? I mean, I guess it's just, it equates to the residents there feel like that they'd rather be in the town, as Wayne suggested, to get the services from the town. But also, you know, based on evaluation I did several years ago for these homeowners, based on their rates, some of them will be saving $50 a month by being in the town. So, it is advantaged long-term for them to be in the town, paying single rates. And to answer your question, these subdivisions here, they are subdivisions that we rescued, but the rest of the ones you see that are not in the town limits are on, potentially on just wells and septic systems and have not received failures that we have to rescue.
Did you say that the town had an annexation plan for this...
At one time. We don't have it anymore.
At one time?
Yes.
And that was dropped due to the lack of interest on the neighborhood's part, or...
No, it was dropped because the General Assembly ended up changing the annexation laws.
The forced annexation?
Yeah, they changed the annexation laws.
Okay.
Another question on the, bringing them into the standards, as you mentioned, they were built on Wake County standards, and when they get folded in, will there be any kind of grandfathering that they get on building additions or anything of that nature, any redevelopment, tearing down a house, rebuilding, what have you? They are in, under Cary's jurisdiction at that point, no longer grandfathered under some lax Wake County requirement?
There are some provisions. I mean, we try to match them up with the most comparable zoning districts, so there might be some areas where they may not meet it exactly, and there are some provisions in the ordinance that allow for that. But, I mean, most of them, you know, based on lot size, will meet this requirement or will meet the zoning designation.
And all the building code, all jurisdictions enforce the state building code, so it's all the same.
Doesn't matter.
So, but just to follow up on that, to get a little more specific, there's no residences here that have a current conforming structure that is going to come into our guidelines and turn into non-conform?
I'm not sure.
As far as setbacks, I mean, somebody's deck is built out from the back of their house, and it's a conforming deck at this point. And they actually have some land that they could actually add a little hot tub on. If it comes in under Cary standards, are our standards going to impose tighter restrictions to where that deck, one day was conforming, and for us, now it's non-conforming? So, their ability to add or do modifications to their property ceases to exist?
I mean, they'll still have the ability. There might be some, you know, there could be some instances where they may need to seek a variance or something. But there are, as far as being grandfathered, you know, there are protections, there are provisions in the ordinance now that protect, you know, what is coming into the town, based on, you know, what was there previously.
Okay.
You know, if they want to expand on their house or do something, they could run into an issue where they may have to seek a variance or modification to the ordinance to do that.
Okay.
Back to Mr. Rogers' question. So, if, right now, they pay Wake County taxes, they don't pay town of Cary taxes, correct? So they'll get a reduction in the non-residential sewer, but they'll begin to pay town of Cary taxes?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we ready for a motion? Or, Wayne, do you have something else you want to say at this?
Well, no, I just don't think they're getting a free ride by joining Cary. I mean, if that was the direction your initial thought was going with, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure they really are getting any kind of a free ride out of this thing.
I'm not suggesting the residents are getting a free ride. I'm suggesting the developer got a good deal. My concern here is precedent. If I had dirt that was in Wake County, and my choice was either, you know, apply for annexation into Cary, or to develop it under much laxer standards, under the Wake County rules, and then let the homeowners apply for annexation, you know, after I had not put in the street improvements or after I hadn't supported the greenway?
I understand that.
I hate the precedent that that establishes, but I appreciate, this happened in the 90s. This isn't today.
Right. Right, exactly. That's old history. You know, I mean, this isn't a developer-initiated annexation at this point.
If we have no other comments?
I guess I'll make a motion, if I can even find out what our...
14 REZ 02.
Thank you. I'll get it here. And this is a comprehensive plan amendment?
Res zoning.
It is a rezoning?
Uh-huh.
Okay. All right. Well, then I make, I move that the board forward case REZ, case 14 REZ 02 to the town council with a recommendation for approval as it is consistent with a comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
You've kind of heard my argument here, so I'll just simply say that this seems reasonable. I don't think the town is getting particularly hurt in any way. And we're just beginning to fill in some areas that probably ultimately will become part of the town.
And there's one unique circumstance here that I think we've mentioned, but we need to be, remember it. Their septic system failed and we, the word you used, I believe, was rescued. We went in there and rescued that. That's not going to happen if someone else were to build on Wake County standards. If that were the case and they applied for rezoning, they would pay to have sewer brought to each home. They would pay to have water brought to each home and they would, they would bear a big impact. This is a sort of a unique situation here. And I understand it's, potentially could happen with the adjacent properties. But that's something to me that, that doesn't ring so much as a precedent in this case.
For me, it boils down to something relatively simple. There's quite a few people that by choice want to be part of Cary. And there are a handful of people who by choice don't and this satisfies all those people. And I think it's great that they want to be part of Cary, the majority of them.
Yes, I'll, I'll have to agree with that. I've heard from so many people in this general vicinity that the last thing they want to do is become part of Cary. They're not part of Cary and they don't want to be. Here we have some people who do want to be. And since I'm obviously one of those who wants to be part of Cary, I'm glad there's some other people who feel the same way. So I certainly support this.
Well, as I said previously, I am concerned when we continue the process of creating donut holes because we've been struggling with them for so long in the older parts of Cary. But it appears as if this is one of those cases where, like it or not, we're probably going to, you know, create a situation where if we might have a donut hole again, then we're just going to have to live with it. So that said, I'm going to call this motion to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And I believe that's the last item on our agenda, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have a motion, second?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.